Parks and Leisure Policy Committee, welcome to the public in the gallery and obviously welcome to those who are watching this on the webcast. This meeting should have been held last Monday, it was postponed for the funeral initially of Kate Sheldon and subsequently national events took over with the death and announcement of the funeral of Queen Elizabeth II. Tributes and kind words were given at full council and I don't intend to add to them today. Sadly, I didn't have the chance to get to know Kate, but I do know how well she was respected and how much she was loved in the committee and throughout Sheffield. Thank you. So, the meeting today is open to the public, we have received three questions from the public which we will go through. Please, can I request that mobile phones and other equipment are switched to silent mode so not disturb the conduct of the meeting? I'm assured there is no planned fire test today, so if it goes off, please go to the assembly point in an orderly manner. I've now asked the members to introduce themselves, could I start with Alan?
councillor Allen Hooper, councillor for West Ecclesfield Ward, thank you.
councillor Sue Alston, councillor for Fulwood Ward.
Mary.
councillor Mary Lee, representing Darnall Wood.
Kate.
councillor Karen McGowan, Burley Ward.
Tony.
councillor Tony Downey, Hillsborough Ward.
Marion.
Marielle Elliott, Green councillor for Gleeless Valley.
And Bernard.
Bernard Little, Green councillor for Walkie Ward.
Thank you. And the officers, Rachel.
Thank you Chair, Rachel Marshall, Principal Democratic Services Officer.
Thank you councillor Wood, I'm Robert Parkin, I'm the legal adviser to today's committee.
Lisa.
Hi, I'm Lisa Firth, I'm the director for Parks, Leisure and Libraries.
And Kate.
Hi, I'm Kate Clark, Service Manager for Physical Activity, Sport and Health in the Sport, Leisure and Health team.
Thank you. And on my left, I forgot, is Paul Wood, councillor Paul Wood, who is the vice chair. Thank you. Can I have apologies for absence, please? As I understand it, we've had an apology from councillor Peter Price and Mary will be acting as substitute. Thank you. Item three on the agenda is exclusion of the public and press, there will be a closed part of the report at item 11, there's two parts to item 11, the first part will be open and the second part will be closed. This means it's not available for the public and press because it contains exempt information described in paragraph three of Schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972 as amended relating to financial and business affairs. The committee are therefore asked to formally exclude the public and press from discussions on this item to allow for consideration of sensitive information. Item four, declarations of interest, do any members have any declarations of interest to be made on our terms today? Okay, can we note that there aren't any? Well, item five is the minutes of the previous meeting that was held on the 13th of June, I'll go through this page by page, if you have anything to say, please let me know. Page 11, page 12, page 13, page 14, page 15 and finally page 16. Okay, those minutes are therefore approved. Item six is public questions and petitions, I'm advised, I know petitions for this committee, but we do have three public questions, the first of which is Mr Andy Chaplin, who I believe has two sets of questions he'd like answered. Good afternoon, Andy, would you like to do your first set of questions, please?
Yeah, if you could just read your questions, that first section of questions, please.
Do you want me to read the whole thing or do you just want the specific questions?
Just the specific questions, please.
Okay. Right, the specific questions are then, we would ask the committee to scrutinise the development of the initial plan and the procurement process and this is in relation to the Hillsborough Park Activity Hub. I take it everybody has got a copy of the background to this, because the background is actually quite important.
I believe so.
Okay, second question is, we would ask the committee to satisfy themselves that allocating £207,000 to the Activity Hub scheme makes financial sense. And then, there's a series of questions that assuming that the spoken hub model does make some sort of sense, then we'd ask the committee, does it make sense to reconfigure a well-used space in Hillsborough Park that is still in a reasonable condition? Is the loss of two-thirds of the current mugger area an acceptable loss of free space, free-to-use space? Are there adequate arrangements being made for the disabled group cycling for all? Will the smaller mugger that's being proposed be free and available to use at any time for casual play? And is it acceptable that the number of Sheffield floodlit tennis courts will reduce from four to three? All four of them at the moment are in Hillsborough Park. Is the £207,000 of section 106 money being used correctly as specified on a mugger replacement? Who bears and what is the cost of moving three tennis courts, which is what it looks like in the latest proposal, to facilitate tram lines entry gates? Will the income generated in Hillsborough Park be used for the benefit of the park? And what evidence is there that the proposed scheme increases physical activity compared to the current tennis and informal mugger usage? We would therefore, friends of Hillsborough Park, ask the committee to ensure that they're satisfied that any proposals resulting from the procurement process address these concerns. And in the meantime, we'll be writing to the Law and Tennis Association to also raise our concerns.
Okay, thank you very much for those questions. What I propose to do is respond in writing to you personally, we have had a discussion about some of those when we met the other week and so shall we be writing to you personally, we'll have full written answers which other members of the committee will be able to see and I will copy you in, they will be available on the website. Thank you. Also submitted, the end of last week, 22nd, you dated your questions, another set of questions, would you like to ask those?
No, in effect, this set of questions are the questions that I've refined since we had the meeting on the 8th of September, I think it was, actually on Hillsborough Mugger, so it's basically those questions that we would like some answers, not answers to actually, we would like the committee to look at the scheme when proposals come back.
Okay, I will supply answers, because that's what I have to do, I also believe, and I might ask officer Lisa Firth to confirm this, that the meeting we had and where we are is at the very beginning of a long procurement process and that will come back reference to this committee throughout that process, is that correct Lisa?
Aye.
We don't intend to try and do this behind closed doors.
Chair, can we be assured that this is going to come back to this, this committee will actually look at this in this, in this format?
As far as I'm concerned, yes, because it will be referred back, you have to remember the decision to go ahead with this was made pre-committee by the carer notes, but we will be making sure that it is the right thing to be doing.
But it will, we will be looking at it line by line in this committee?
The decision has been made, what we'll be looking at and being referenced, as I understand it, is we're being asked for our concerns and our opinions on things, the officers will be working to provide the best solution for the decision that was made in April. We have a question from Dave Conshaw on golf courses, he's not here but he will get a written answer, and a question from Anisa Enru regarding Mather Park, she has already had a written answer, and that concludes the questions from the public this week.
Can I just ask, on the golf courses, would it be possible for all councillors to receive that response?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
That concludes item six, we'll go to item seven, which is the work programme.
Thank you Chair, this is on page 17 of the full agenda pack that you've got in front of you, just give you a few seconds to leave to that page. Recommendations are set out on page 18 from one to four, so we'd be asking for the committee to note then, I'd like to point out that this work programme is owned by this committee. In, I would like to draw particular attention to section two, which has references from council or other committees, there are two in there which I will pass back to the Chair in a moment to just report back on what's happening with those. As you leave through, you can see what the intended future programme is, for meeting three and so on, and there are also section, in section 2.2, there's references to some skills, training and development that's happened. So, we'd just be asking for the committee to note those recommendations, please, and I'll just, I'll pass back to the Chair for section 2.1.
councillor Alston, did you have a question?
Thank you Chair, yeah, it's just looking at the work programme in general, particularly sort of pages 22 and 23, and I note that a large number of items that were, from what I can read, scheduled to come to this committee have all been sent back to, or taken back probably, to finance subcommittee, and given that my understanding of this committee system was that once we were given a budget, it was for us to work within that budget and to make the decisions, it looks as though actually a large number of decisions that we were due to make have been taken away from this committee and I just wondered if there was a reason for that.
Thank you. Not that I'm aware of, but certainly I share your concerns, I shall be raising this at the next, excuse me, I'm advised that Ruth Belkin.
Chair, I can respond to that if it's helpful, when we originally designed the work programme, we for example in Parks put all of our capital works on this committee because we didn't know where those decisions were going to be taken, they're actually being taken through the capital programme, so the decisions would have never sat here, we just wanted to make sure that they were represented as these committees started. It's not the Parks budget that you're, for example, you're going to be talking about today, it's actually capital money and the like. I don't know if that's helpful.
Thank you, that is helpful, it just seems odd to me that so much that appears to be communities-based, we will apparently have no input into.
I think if I could just add that, the specific projects that they relate to, we can of course have input into, okay, so if for instance there's a proposal to do work in a certain park, then we can have the discussion about that proposal, but the decision on whether to spend that capital money would be ultimately taken by the Strategy and Resources of the Finance Subcommittee.
Just to be sure, just to make note, so in the past, capital approvals on a particular Parks projects for example will be taken by the Cabinet member and the Cabinet, and now the two are divided, although you will come and talk to this committee about the proposals, the decision is made somewhere else. That's what I understood you've just said, it's just important to know because we have got a governance committee that meets regularly and we need to understand these things.
Could I, could I respond Chair, is that okay?
Please do.
So, if we think about how things happened before, the Cabinet member and the local councillors would have discussions around developments in certain parks, that's still the case, so this committee will be able to talk about any of those developments, the actual approval to spend the money during the project stage was taken at the Capital Programme Group and that's what the Strategy and Resources Committee will be doing, so any discussions around any of those items of development we can still have in this committee, it's a final, final decision on spending the capital money will stick with the Strategy and Resources Group once this committee has agreed it.
I'm even more confused now, so we can look at a project, we can agree it's a great project, we can maybe decide we want it slightly this way or that way, but actually we have no power to say we want it this way or that way, or we want it or we don't want it because the actual decisions are all going to be taken somewhere else.
No, sorry, that's not what I mean, I'm not making myself clear, so this, this committee has the ability to say we want it this way or that way, there's a certain pot of money available, but once the decision has been made about this way or that way, that's the actual spending of the money is taken by the Strategy and Resources Committee, but the this way and that way is developed with this committee, it's not this committee's budget.
Is that not the wrong way round? Should it not be a decision is made that you can have X amount of money and then the committee decide how they want to spend it? It just feels wrong to me, but this is probably a discussion for another place.
Thank you councillor Alston, I tend to agree and I think this is something that should come up in the review we're having in November.
Just to say, we always look at what officers are recommending, that's really, really important because they know the whole city, so that's really important that we take note of officers' recommendations when we're deciding things go this way or that way, but I do take on what Sue said about who makes the final decision, I think it's important that if it's just we make the final, we make a decision and then it goes to Strategy and Resources for an approval, which is what would happen in Cabinet, I guess, that's, we just need clarity on that one. It's not just this committee.
Thank you. councillor Wood.
It's not only Parks, grant aid to communities has been moved to finance sub by support there being a serious look at how this is working as it seems wrong.
Thank you councillor Wood, yes, I agree with you and I think it's something that should go back and in, as I say, there is a review in November and if I don't raise it, can you all make an effort to raise it as well, please?
I'll take it away to look into it as well.
councillor Elliot.
Thank you Chair, just to echo what the other councillors have been saying, it's been quite frustrating actually and I think, you know, councillor Williams and councillor Wood would agree, you know, the reason why we don't have much on the agenda today for example is because we had an item that was removed with quite short notice, we didn't really have time to put something else on, that's something that we are still in discussions with about legal and it's about grant aid funding, but it's, it's the same as what we're talking about with other issues, this, this committee should be making substantive decisions and then they should be going to perhaps Finance Sub or S and R for approval, but substantive decision-making I think does need to come to this committee and some things do seem to be a bit the wrong way around, I agree with you councillor Alston, so it does seem to be that getting things on the agenda is, is the issue in this committee and perhaps we need to, yeah, obviously go to the governance review with that feedback, but if officers could perhaps help us work through the items so that we do actually know that we've got some items that we will be looking at and they're not all referred on and removed. Thanks.
Thank you. I believe we should be coming back to point two of the work programme, these were a series of questions which were referred to us from other, from the council or other committees, on this particular occasion, these are from the Central ACAC, there are five questions, it's worth reading them out, yeah, for the benefit of those people in the gallery particularly and on the webcast, the questions that were received by the Central ACAC from Mr Chaplin were as follows. Question one, why have our councillors appeared to have been so powerless in securing better arrangements for the local community? Question two, why have council officers appeared to be, to issue a statement in support of tram lines showing awareness of these issues? Question three, why are Hillsborough residents and businesses not considered a vital voice in the arrangements that apply to tram lines and for other potential events? Question four, will the Central ACAC help the campaign to reinstate the previous leave and re-enter options? And question five, will the Central ACAC help local traders who lose out during the event weekend? In terms of the way forward for this committee, questions one, four and five are not ready for us to comment on, they are really asking the Central ACAC to do something, so we should send that back to the Central ACAC and say you, you sort that out, please, and question three and four, sorry, two and three, really that's something for the Economic Skills and Development Committee to look at, so as far as I'm concerned, we will make sure they get to where they need to be, to be answered, but they are not with this committee. Thank you.
Thank you Chair, yeah, I feel somewhat frustrated with this, I am Chair of Central ACAC and the advice I was given and we were given at our Central ACAC meeting was that the, that this item was to come to this committee, so we seem to be bouncing it from one place to another where we're not able to make a decision or look at this in any great depth. I'd like some clarity really, I'm not sure where that clarity will come from, I know my ACAC, the members of the ACAC committee in Central have sat down with local traders in Hillsborough and have done a lot of work on that and I believe with local residents as well, it just feels frustrating that it's going backwards and forwards, can we, can we come, can we come after this meeting, say, to discuss where this is going to lie? Because it's, it's not satisfactory. Thank you.
I share your frustration Bernard and I will do everything I can to work with you to make sure the questions go to the right place to get the right answers. We also had another referral regarding the Althill Fields which has been dealt with. Thank you. I understand that now concludes the work programme, I think there's been some interesting points from councillor Little, councillor Alston, et cetera, thank you. Item eight is an update on the public facing sport and leisure strategy.
Hello everyone, I'm here to give an update on the sport and leisure strategy which went to, had a leader's decision made back in March to sign off the themes for the strategy, I'm going to update you today on the consultation we carried out, the key findings of that consultation, the themes of the strategy and the next steps in terms of the timeline. So, the reason we set about developing the sport and leisure strategy for Sheffield was for a number of reasons, last year we had formal approval of investment in our sport and leisure facilities across the city following a leisure facilities review, and we also had the launch of the Move More Physical Activity Strategy for the city in 2021 and a new Sport England strategy uniting the movement, so in order to shape our future investments in facilities and services and to kind of set out a clear policy position in terms of our sport and leisure facilities in the future, we undertook to develop a sport and leisure strategy for Sheffield, the key part of this was to have a big consultation which we held earlier in the year, is someone going to move the side on? Thanks, I'll wave at you when I need it moving on, so we carried out a consultation in early 2022 which I came and talked to a lot of members about, so you may have heard about previously, in terms of that consultation, we wanted to make sure we were talking to people across the city to get their views on physical activity and sport, how they would like to get more active, the impact of Covid on their activity and also where they'd like to invest in both facilities and services in the future and that is within our indoor facilities but also our outdoor facilities, parks and open spaces across the city, so we had a kind of multi-pronged approach to the consultation to make sure we talked to underrepresented groups and also those we know face barriers to getting active across the city, we had an online survey of Sheffield residents which we had nearly 1,800 responses to, we held some online focus groups in each local area committee areas to get kind of local input into that, those conversations, we also carried out target questionnaires with communities that we knew might not be able to access our online consultation, so we worked with a number of community organisations across the city to carry out those surveys in their communities, for example ethnically diverse communities and for people with long-term health conditions, we had around 328 responses to those surveys, we also carried out a lot of sessions across the city with various groups that included kind of disability groups, those with long-term health conditions, LGBTQ plus groups and children and young people and older people as well, and again kind of ethnically diverse communities, we did over 30 sessions and 300 individuals were involved in those sessions which gave us some really useful kind of feedback and insights into how to tackle some of those barriers people are facing for getting active, we also had finally a survey of clubs and national governing bodies of sport, so to enable them to feed into the process. In terms of the key findings, we'll be shortly releasing the report into the kind of full consultation, but the key sports that kind of came back strongly, that people wanted to do more of were walking, running, cycling and swimming, swimming was kind of by far the biggest priority for people, that people wanted us to invest in, in our facilities across the city, but also came back on a number of other areas in terms of children's swimming attainment, where we're finding the Sheffield average of children able to swim 25 metres by the end of key stage two or age 11 is lower than the national by the end of key stage two or age 11 is lower than the national average. So that's a kind of key area for us to look at. We also had a lot of feedback around availability of swimming sessions or lessons, sorry, and cost of swimming, which are all kind of really important information for us to kind of feed into the strategy going forward. We had lots of feedback about the outdoors. People wanted to do more activity and be more active outdoors, particularly wanted to see us invest in parks, paths and sort of walking and cycling networks to kind of help support those things they wanted to do more of. And really strong support for active travel alongside the infrastructure that people wanted to see, that our colleagues in transport services are working on. They also wanted to see things that would enable them to be, to do active travel more easily. So cycle storage, safe cycle storage, both in our leisure facilities or parks and open spaces and also kind of locker storage and shower facilities. So all kind of key things that we can look at to support active travel across the city. Another key thing that came through the consultation was the desire for multipurpose destinations, both indoors and outdoors. So people were really keen to see investment in co-located facilities, particularly healthcare facilities like weight management services and quit smoking, physiotherapy, those sorts of things in our indoor leisure facilities and also community type facilities in those places, such as space for youth facilities. But also a lot of support for having hub sites in parks and countryside in communities of the city with a range of activities for kind of all ages and abilities and cafe and toilet facilities to make sure people can stay longer and be more active in those parks. So those were the kind of key findings of the consultation. In terms of, can you move to the next slide, thanks? In terms of physical activity across the city, whilst Sheffield is kind of compares favourably with the national average of people meeting the chief medical officer's physical activity guidelines, which are two and a half hours of physical activity that raises your breathing rate every week, we found that there was a stark contrast across the city from the postcode data we collected with 60% of the people meeting those guidelines in the south, south-west of the city, while only around 40% in the north-east of the city were meeting those guidelines. So it gives us some kind of clear steer on where resources need focusing in the city to get more people active and also to kind of, those areas correlate with the areas we know have poorer health outcomes to have the biggest impact in terms of improving inequalities in health across the city. Those are the areas that are key for focus. Next slide, please. This slide just outlines the kind of key findings of our target consultation with our underrepresented communities and groups that we talked to, who we know face more difficulties getting active. Really strongly for most of those groups were kind of low-cost and local facilities. So particularly people who might struggle to access transport or getting to some of our large sport and leisure facilities, disabled groups and those with long-term health conditions and particularly also children and young people really keen to see low-cost and local activities in their own communities, which is something we'll be looking at as part of the outreach from our leisure centre operators in the future. The kind of working with the voluntary community sector and having community champions within communities came across very strongly, which supports the approach of our Move More kind of work with This Girl Can and Move More Empowered Communities, where we've had community champions or ambassadors for physical activity out in local communities. People are much more kind of likely to work with them to kind of get active. There was also quite a lot of feedback around marketing and representation in terms of staffing of our leisure facilities, that it should be more representative of the local community and the imagery used in the marketing at leisure centres should be more welcoming. So that's something we'll also be looking at carefully. There was a lot of support for making sure that everyone could access performance pathways and develop their talent regardless of background, whether they could, you know, because cost was obviously often a barrier for people within some communities. And there was also support particularly from our local area committee groups and sessions of support for investing resource where it was most needed. So there was an understanding that in communities across Sheffield, there was kind of more need in some areas for investment to improve health outcomes. So overall, that consultation has given us a huge amount of insight that we'll be using to develop our kind of investment plans going forward in facilities and also our new operator contract in terms of the services provided as part of that. Next slide. So from the consultation we carried out, we developed some underpinning principles and some kind of key themes. So the underpinning principles that we will work to throughout the sport and leisure strategy and in planning our work are community engagement, involvement. So continuing to develop the action plan for the strategy, which I'll talk about shortly, we'll be working with our community partners. We'll also be involving further community consultation as we develop plans for investment in our facilities and parks and countryside, obviously do that with all of the projects they develop as well in terms of making sure the community has a say in those projects. Carbon net zero, obviously really key for us to be looking at. There's a really big opportunity with our leisure facilities to make a big difference in terms of carbon net zero. And any project we're developing, we'll be looking at kind of options for sustainability in terms of construction. Covid recovery, again, the impact of Covid has changed people's behaviours a lot in terms of physical activity and how they want to get active. So that's something we'll be responding to, to make sure we're providing things that fit in with people's requirements going forward. Tackling inequalities and contributing to the wider public health ambitions of reducing health inequalities across the city and also ensuring people have kind of equal access across the city to our facilities and services. Key for us is collaboration and working across the city. We can't, as a small team in the sport and leisure and health team, do this alone. We need to be working with our partners, both in the kind of public, private and community sector to deliver the plan going forward. Inclusivity, again, kind of linking to making sure everyone's got equal access. Also, there's opportunity for us to contribute to the recommendations and outcomes of the Race Equality Commission as part of this strategy, particularly the recommendation five around sport. And again, building on what is strong, we've got a huge amount of work already happening in the city through all sorts of providers and as part of the Move More Physical Activity Strategy and learning and using the kind of learning from that will be also critical to our planning. So we've got six key themes. Investing in Active Sheffield, which is kind of broadly linked to making sure we've got quality, welcoming, accessible facilities indoors and outdoors across the city and making sure that people with the least resources have also got access, making sure we're also hitting those kind of climate impact priorities. Inspiring sporting achievement, which is looking both at major events and what we bring to the city in terms of economic and social benefits and how we can inspire people across the city to take part in sport, but also looking at development of talent across the city, working with grassroots clubs and coaches all the way up to elite sport to develop those talent pathways and making sure people have got access to that, whatever their background. Active communities, very much will focus on providing that kind of local provision where people need it, linking in with the local area committees and making sure we're kind of linking in with their priorities. And also focusing on the groups that need support within their local areas, such as disabled people and those with long-term health conditions, active children and young people, which is going to be focusing on kind of embedding physical activity in early years, working with schools and also youth services to develop activities and priorities for young people across the city and physical activity. Active environments, again, making sure we focus on designing attractive, welcoming and accessible spaces in our parks and open spaces, but also linking those and connecting those neighbourhoods across the city to promote active travel. And finally, connecting to health and wellbeing, again, working across the city to kind of join up the healthcare, social care, linking with social prescribing, sorry, for physical activity. Next slide, please. So finally, just to sum up, the work we've done so far is developed the themes. We have developed commitments under each of those themes, which we then plan to launch next month, sorry, as part of the public facing strategy. Following on from that, we'll be developing a five-year implementation plan with actions under each of the commitments, which we will then bring back to this committee for monitoring the future. And alongside the action plan, there'll be an evaluation framework, then kind of key indicators to measure progress alongside the action plan. Okay, that's it. Over to you. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you very much, Kate. Do we have any questions or comments? councillor Elliot.
Thank you, Kate, for your work on the consultation, which will form the basis of the council's sport and leisure offer. So you've indicated that swimming is the highest priority for various reasons. So is it time to talk about how we heat our swimming pools then? Because obviously the second underpinning principle is carbon net zero and you did say it's a good opportunity to have sustainable builds. So what commitments are there to install air source heat pumps and solar PV in leisure centres which have swimming pools and car parks?
I don't know if it would be best to tell me to respond to that one because I think she's been doing some work in terms of the leisure facilities investments. So I'll pass it over to Tammy, will you?
Sorry, Tammy, for the benefit of people upstairs and on the web, could you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Tammy Barris. I'm the head of health, sport, leisure and health in the city council. So specifically, Marianne, on the new leisure facilities, there's no detail at this point in the exact specifics of what will be implemented for each facility. What we've agreed to undertake is a piece of work looking at carbon reduction across the leisure estate. So as part of that, we'll be looking at environmental measures for the new facilities that we're due to build at Concorde Springs and Hillsborough and also the impact of our existing facilities and where we're investing in those, where it makes sense to put in more environmentally friendly kit and equipment. So there's a piece of work to come. That study has been commissioned and we can bring that back through this committee once that's available.
Okay, thank you. So is that a firm commitment that it's going to be properly explored?
Yes, it is.
And could we go further than that and say that it will be mandated in new buildings?
I don't think that's my decision, Marianne, but we will explore the options and bring those back to this committee.
Okay. I mean, I just, I don't know how much it costs to heat a swimming pool, but it must be a hell of a lot. And I think we do need to, you know, ensure the long-term viability of the leisure centres by looking into this. And it's not a radical or a difficult ask. I mean, I just had a quick search on the internet to see if other local councils are doing it and I found at least eight examples. You know, Eckington did it last year, so I'm sure if they can do it, we can.
Yeah, it is something that we're looking at seriously. We've had meetings recently with colleagues from Exeter putting the St Sidwell's development, that's a passive house scheme. So it is something that we are taking seriously and looking into. But obviously, what we fund and what we develop will be subject to further decisions down the line.
All right. Thank you.
Is that okay, Mary?
Yes, of course. If that could be noted, it would be good if it was written down because I will keep on asking.
We check, I just raise a point as well, that in the strategy, one of those commitments in that public facing strategy is around reducing the carbon emissions of the facilities. So how that, how they end up looking, I don't think we can give that mandate just yet. You know, will it be air source heat pumps? We can't give that commitment, but what we can do is give that commitment and have given that commitment that we will reduce the outputs of them as much as we possibly can do.
Thank you. I've got a number of questions. I'll start with Alan, then Tony and then Mary.
Thank you, Chair, yeah. Very comprehensive, oh Kate, thank you very much, perhaps too comprehensive for us all to take in. Would ask the question about tennis was raised in one of the public questions earlier about the provision. There's nothing in this report that mentions tennis, I don't do believe. It is important. And secondly, crown green bowling, which is very important for a lot of the older people in Sheffield. There's no mention of that in the report. Yeah, just to say that since Covid and certainly from my experience with crown green bowling has there been a lot of members lost, a lot of clubs are really struggling. For instance, we talk about Abbeyfield Park and places like that really struggling. So that's one issue. Where are we going to look at that? There's not really a lot in the report about the non-council providers and there are many voluntary sectors, if you could join them in with what we've got. Regarding swimming, throughout the country, there's been a great loss of swimming pools over the last five, 10 years and we're losing them faster than ever. Covid's not helped and certainly the cost of energy has not helped. We visit late districts such as Kettick, a leisure centre, swimming pool closed. They're not going to open it. It's big trying to get a safer pool, but I don't think it will happen. I think what's come along as well, you know, while you've been made compound in the report, is this energy crisis, which is affecting us all. But in particular, I'll go back to swimming again, swimming pools and the cost of running swimming pools. And somewhere along the line, there's going to be some inflation, the staff costs for certain leisure centres. And I'll give as an example of Thorncliff, which is an excellent centre, including health, is struggling. They've just put up this month their charges. You've had to do, you've had to do. But it doesn't help, but they've got to do to keep the head of water. So, yeah, how do we address that? And that will be an ongoing issue, certainly a big ongoing issue. So I think, yeah, we've got problems. And referring back to the investing in an active Sheffield, the first one of the strategic themes, the council will invest its available resources and I'll stop there. Will they be available resources? Very ambitious, all the plans, but without the funding will not take place. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, shall I respond to some and then I'll pass to who? Yeah, then Tammy. Okay, sorry, we'll do a bit of a three-pronged approach. Tennis and bowling both came up in the consultation. The report I've done today is really summaries those kind of key high-level findings, but both obviously came up as important within the sport and leisure strategy consultation and we will put out that kind of full report alongside the public facing strategy. In terms of kind of key sports, what we'll look at under the action plan is developing kind of plans for key sports. So that'll be something that's an action underneath the overarching kind of high-level strategy. I know indoor bowls is something that's came up really strongly and providing some indoor space as well for bowling, for bowling greens across the city. And in terms of tennis, we're obviously working across parks and I don't know if Ruth wants to say anything in terms of the LCA and looking at tennis court refurbishments across a number of parks, I think, as well. So they are all on the radar and they will kind of be in the more detail of the strategy. I think what we have said as part of the work programme is we'll come back with an update on the action plan once we've got into that action planning, so we can kind of give more detail on what we're doing under those key sports as part of that. Non-council providers, I think we've been working kind of across the board with universities, you know, clubs and private spaces and as part of the playing pitch strategy, which is something we're, I'm talking about next. So we are, we are doing that and they will very much be involved in that kind of developing the action plan because it, yes, it's not just about our, us and our kind of sites. So that'll be, that'll be part of that work.
We had a consultation event on the first of March where we had providers from across the city, universities, voluntary sector, Sport England, all different providers, local facilities, Stockbridge Leisure Centre, for instance, all involved in that consultation piece. So we very much brought everyone together as well, so that we're singing from the same inch. We know what we're saying and with their valuable input, so.
Does that answer your questions, Alan? Thank you. Cather Downing.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Kate, for this report. As Alan has just mentioned, it's a very comprehensive report and it's really good to see what we are trying to do here. My question really is about... My question really is about, you've mentioned inclusivity and obviously disabled, disabled groups across the city. I know in my ward we've got, we've got a couple of disabled groups and are we working with these, with the VCF to try and promote more, more disabled facilities across the city?
Yeah, I think we're doing a number of things where we're kind of developing new projects or facilities, we're making sure those are accessible and we consult with the Axis Liaison Group and Disability Sheffield on those plans to, you know, we've also done a lot of consultation with disabled, with different disabled groups as to what we need to think about in terms of our facilities going forward when we are designing those. We're also working closely with groups across Sheffield, for example Cycling For All, a part of our move more kind of theme groups and have been involved in some of the work we are doing to kind of feedback on what sorts of things we need to, we need to do as well. So yes, we'll be working with those groups and inviting them into the action planning process as well. And Disability Sheffield have been really key in kind of giving us information and some of the disability steering groups at our leisure facilities, kind of indoor leisure facilities as well are fed into that process.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair. councillor McGowan.
Thank you and thank you for the report. One of the things that crops up in my ward all the time is there's not enough for kids to do. And I always argue the fact that we've got everything in Burley Ward except for a swimming pool. I was told we haven't got a climbing frame either the other day when I said it, but we've got everything from BMX, we've got BMX track, skate park, we've got fishing ponds, we've got a golf course, there's just absolutely loads. The problem we've got is kids either don't know about it or can't access it because there's no direct buses or links from them, from where they live. So it's about getting that message out to make these facilities viable, we need more people using them. And I just wondered how you're going to market, because it's not just for children, there's lots of facilities for others as well, but it's about getting, how do you advertise them? How do you get it out there? More people using it keeps the cost down as well. So it's, you know, what you're doing around that really.
And so we'll be appointing a new provider to operate the facilities and that will be part of their remit as well to start promoting them and obviously getting people through the door. We're also working with other council services, so youth services, particularly to your example, the youth strategy, we're involving those services as well so that we can consider, you know, do we have a youth service or a youth centre in a leisure centre for instance and combining the facilities? So we're not, it's not just about kind of outwardly promoting them as well, it's about how we use them and what we use them and what we put in there as well. So yeah, youth strategy is really being key to the, to the consultation work that Kate's done and described. Yeah, I mean, I'd like to add to that, we did have a lot of feedback about marketing and how people find out about things and with some communities, you know, not necessarily wanting to find out about things online. So it's also very much about us making sure we're communicating kind of out through the local area committees and their kind of mailing lists and where they kind of link into and making sure we use our community providers as well, who are a kind of voice in the local community to get the message out there about things that are happening. So that's something we'll kind of look at as part of this as well.
Okay, councillor Little.
Thank you very much, Kate, for coming today and you've done fantastic work in the Pond de Rosa, which is, you know, hugely beneficial, particularly to the older people in that park. They've now got a large area, a large route that they can now walk along, which is hugely important. I've got two questions. One, this is a sport and leisure strategy, I'm just wondering what the scope of the, of the leisure bit of it is or what, how it's seen. For example, there's lots of people who are actively or want to be actively involved in conservation groups, which is, you know, they're not interested in sport, they're interested in being out in the countryside and doing things and being part of a community. So is that part of the scope of this? My second question is probably the other end of the spectrum of this and it's about exclusion. The cost of both money and time commitment to a young person, for example, helping them achieve their absolute, their optimum as an athlete is phenomenal. Is, and there must be lots of young people that don't have that chance, is that being monitored in schools or anywhere so that those people, they aren't disappointed from an earlier age?
I think in terms of the sport and leisure strategy and what it covers, it covers physical activity. So anything that is getting people up and active and, you know, getting their heart rate moving, so, you know, it's as basic as walking and, you know, doing the kind of activities you're talking about, getting out and about and taking part in a conservation group, they're getting active. So that is under the hat of this, this strategy. Because we have the Move More Sheffield Physical Activity Strategy, we've not kind of put active in the title of the strategy, but it very much covers the whole kind of spectrum of what people want to get involved in that gets them active. So yeah, that's the scope of it. In terms of cost and time, it's something we've had a lot of feedback from people around accessing those kind of performance pathways and access to kind of, you know, developing talent. I'm not sure if, I know whether it's being monitored or not, but it's something that we would be looking at to make sure that those people who have got that talent, that we want to develop it, have got opportunities through it, might be working with our kind of national governing bodies or operators, looking at bursaries for, you know, children and young people who couldn't otherwise be able to be involved. So I don't know, either of you want to add anything to that one?
I think, just to add to Kate's feedback, as part of developing the new procurement route for a new provider, we'll be looking at concessions and one of the things that we'll ask providers about is just that, what will they do and help to support people who are talented but don't necessarily have the means and affordability to be able to access the centres? So one of the responses back from providers that we will be able to monitor and score against is what they'll do for concessions in general, so people that are from poor families accessing facilities, but also what they'll be able to do to help support people that are talented but might not be able to, you know, fulfill the potential due to cost and availability. So that's through the provider, but also governing bodies in some respects will support through sponsorships and other things. So I think there's a, there's a specific piece of work there around that and the report that we bring back in November, we'll look at some of that and some of the questions that we're going to ask providers and the feedback that we're expecting. So we'll be able to give more detail on that as that work develops.
Okay with that? Thank you.
Thank you. Firstly, I'm really glad you raised the issue of the bowls because I was going to have to ask about that, so you've already answered that without me asking it. Thanks to Alan. Just feeding on a little bit from what you've already said to Bernard, it talks at the end of this report about a five-year implementation plan. Is there a sort of more detailed timetable here of what we're expecting to see happen and when and what, what is going to be offered? I mean, have we actually got something in place there to make sure that this moves forward? Because otherwise, or are we just sort of, you know?
So once we've launched the public facing strategy, which we're aiming to do next month, we'll be developing a five-year action plan, which we're very much detailing the actions and responsibilities, who's responsible for each action, under the commitments which we've got under each theme. So yes, there will be something in place that is clear in terms of what the actions are, who's responsible for it and what the time scales are. So that's something we'll then be able to kind of develop a framework for monitoring and bring back to this committee, perhaps on an annual, probably something we'll do as an annual review of the action plan to see what have we achieved, what, you know, hasn't been achieved, what do we need to look at, is there anything new that's kind of come up in that time period that we then need to add on? So that will be something that we're doing, that's the next piece of work once we've launched the strategy.
I mean, I think, you know, that is actually really, really important, that otherwise it'll drift, you know, it needs to be really focused and we do need to be able to see, I think, at this committee where we're up to, have we achieved our targets? If not, why not? Are we ahead of target? Brilliant, you know, and so to make sure that we, we make sure things progress and happen.
The council, as Kate's alluded to, we've got the Move More Physical Activity Strategy in the city, but what the council... Oh. It doesn't work. It doesn't have. So what the council doesn't have is a sport and physical activity strategy? We don't have one currently? When we talk about investment in facilities, what we don't have is a strategy that can hold us to account to say, well, why are we making that investment? What are we, what are we doing with those facilities once we've invested in them and brought them up to the standard that they need to be and how do we get people into them? So this, this piece of work that Kate's updated on is going to give us that to be held accountable as a local authority to say, this is our approach to physical activity and sport, but also getting that balance between what Bernard was saying about, you know, pathways for disadvantaged or underprivileged communities and individuals and children and balancing that with having these top-class facilities for elite athletes, you know, that are going to go through and perform at nationals or international level. And we don't have that at the minute, so it absolutely will do what you've described and we'll be able to look at that and say, are we doing what we said we were going to do? And actually, does it need to change as well? Because things like, you know, energy costs and, you know, cost of living crisis, they all influence how things might need to change. So yeah, it absolutely will hold us to account as an authority.
Thank you. And final question because I'm conscious of time and in fact that would actually be the full house. Everybody's asked a question or made a comment on this, which I think is a reflection of your excellent report. So, Mary.
Well, I'm trying to speak quick, well, thanks for bringing the report and it's, I know it's, I've been involved in it, that it's, there's a lot of work gone into it. But I think what you were saying lastly, Lisa, about accessible, we've got access to sports, but we need to really have access to sports and I think, you know, we do need that as a strategy to ensure that everybody across the city has that access, you know, no matter where they, where they live. Because we know a third of people do it anyway, a third dabble and the rest do nothing. So, you know, and that starts at an early age, so we do need to have those social outcomes embedded somewhere.
Okay, thank you. I've been hijacked. One final, final question by councillor Elliot.
Sorry, just one more. So it's about accessibility, particularly for people with physical disabilities and I echo councillor Downing saying that this is a really important consideration and, you know, it'd be good to see the council leading the way, making sports accessible to all, for example, making sure Cycling For All have decent space in Hillsborough Park. But this question is specifically about parks, it might be one for Ruth, and on this survey it says that 75% of respondents use parks in the city for outdoor activity. So presumably that's just out and about enjoying the park. But I notice in a lot of parks, there are K-frame barriers and other barriers which make them really, really inaccessible for people on mobility scooters, for example. Is there a program of works to remove those?
You're right that a number of our parks do have barriers. We have barriers to stop or try to stop antisocial behaviour. What we try and have is barriers that are appropriate for the site, so if we can have open access, we do. And if we do have issues, we then put a, more of a barrier in. We don't have a program to remove them because we're trying to respond to what is on that site. If we have issues reported to us, we do look at whether, as in somebody is struggling to get on that site, we do have a look at whether there is another way of doing it. There isn't always, to be honest.
Okay, so if someone in my ward contacts me specifically about a barrier, what, do I get in touch with you?
Please come to me, yeah, absolutely, and we'll look at whether or not we've got the right barrier in the right place and whether or not there's anything else we can do.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. That's been a really interesting session, lots of good questions and comments, as I say, reflects the quality of your report, Kate. It is ambitious, yeah, but we'll get there, I'm sure. Thank you very much. Item nine is the playing pitch strategy. This is actually full recommendation and a vote at the end of it, so who's taking it?
Me, me again. Yeah, so this report is to seek approval for the adoption of Sheffield City Council's playing pitch strategy, which is a strategic assessment that provides analysis of the supply and demand of pitches and outdoor sports facilities across the city and that includes private and education sites as well as those managed by ourselves. It focuses on football, rugby league and rugby union, hockey and cricket, both natural turf, grass pitches and artificial grass pitches. What it doesn't cover is tennis bowls or ball courts, so tarmac ball courts, they're not under the playing pitch strategy. And the assessment and strategy provides a set of general recommendations and some sport-specific recommendations and an action plan for delivery. In terms of how it's developed, the strategy was developed by a consultant working with the relevant national governing bodies of sport with representation from local authority and Sport England. It also carried out consultation across clubs and those kind of using, using those pitches. And as part of our sport and leisure strategy consultation, we also had quite a lot of feedback around the protection of pitches, particularly cricket and the demand for hockey pitches in the north of the city. So there's been consultation to develop the strategy with the governing bodies and the clubs and also as part of our sport and leisure strategy consultation. It follows a methodology that's set out by Sport England that they require us to follow for it to be kind of considered by them as a playing pitch strategy. In terms of what it does, it provides us with a clear framework of, for prioritization of our provision and development of sports pitches and facilities across the local authority. And it also provides support for the delivery of the local plan policies, including the protection enhancement and provision of community sport and physical activity facilities across the city. And it provides evidence for negotiation with developers when they come in with planning applications to look at whether, you know, there's the need for replacement of sport pitches or facilities. It also provides an evidence base for funding bids, which allow us to apply for external funding and also for clubs and national governing bodies to draw in funding towards sport facilities in the, in the city. In terms of what the findings were, it looks at, it carries out a needs assessment and it looks at kind of current demand but also projected demand in terms of talking to the national governing bodies and clubs about their plans and also population growth across the city. And across the different sports, it's projecting a kind of increased demand in facilities going forward. In terms of the current situation, there's a kind of deficit of certain football pitches for certain games but an oversupply of others. There's a deficit of artificial cricket wickets and cricket facilities are kind of at 65% capacity, so going forward there'll be an increased demand. Hockey, it projects an increased demand and again with rugby league and the rugby union increased, a slight increase in demand. So across the board, there's likely to be an increase in demand in the future. So in terms of the general recommendations of the strategy, and I suppose that's what we're kind of wanting to adopt, is to continue to use our local planning policy to protect the provision of playing pitch sites under its jurisdiction, the local authority, to reduce loss and impact on sport and physical activity provision. The study doesn't support disposing of any disused sites without a full investigation into whether they could be used for future supply and demand and if any sites are to be lost, they should either be replaced or strategic evidence provided to kind of demonstrate why they should be lost. The other recommendations, general recommendations of the strategy are to work with clubs and volunteers and to provide autonomy to allow them to develop their own facilities, so similar to what we've done recently with Millhouses and Matthews Lane Cricket Pavilions, where the clubs working there, we've supported them to develop their own facilities. It also recommends addressing the issue of poor ancillary and changing facilities across the city through the refurbishment and replacement of pavilion facilities, prioritizing multi-pitch sites. So that's something we're looking at already at sites like Park and Cross Park, where we're looking at a multi-sport approach and refurbishing the pavilion there. So that's something we're looking at already at sites like Parson Cross Park, where we're looking at a multi-sport approach and refurbishing the pavilion there. It also recommends enhancing the drainage and maintenance of pitches across the city. Again, we're currently working on a grass pitch pilot with the Football Foundation to look at tackling that issue as well. It recommends developing community use agreements where they're not in place for education sites, where pitches could be used for community use. And it's also recommending, again, supporting clubs on local authority pitches to develop long-term security and secure their own funding towards facilities. So in terms of the recommendation, I guess the risks of not adopting the strategy is that we couldn't use it as an evidence base going forward for funding applications to draw more funding in. And the recommendations, obviously, we don't have funding to do everything that's in the action plan at the moment. That'd be very much working with clubs and national governing bodies and ourselves to apply for external funding from Sport England, Football Foundation and various other external sources. And without adopting it, it can't be used as an evidence base for the local plan, which might stop us getting developer contributions towards replacing pitch sites going forward. So I think that's a summary. If anyone's got any questions, please ask. I think probably the key thing to say is myself and Tammy weren't involved in the development of the playing pitch strategy. That was our officers Alan Williams and James Barnes, who have both recently retired. So obviously, they've put in all the hard work. We're just reporting today. So there may be some questions we can't answer straight away. We might need to go away and get full answers on those for you.
Again, thank you, Kate. I saw a number of arms go up. I think Karen was first, but if you could just, if you want to ask a question, please could you stick your hands up again?
Thanks, Chris, Kate. Just a couple of things. And I don't know if it's me that's misunderstanding. It keeps mentioning Sill investment, and I was just wondering how local councils, because my understanding is local councillors decide where they want, you know, and it might be that councillors have earmarked that they want to spend it on a park. And, you know, and it comes back to the local plan and this policy, and which trumps which? You know, if the local plan's looking for somewhere for housing, which one's not more important, though, you know, has more power?
I think in terms of the Sill, there's obviously your local pot that you very much control. And the kind of wider, citywide pot isn't there, which can be kind of influenced, I think, in terms of providing sporting facilities. But there are also often specific kind of sport contributions. If there is a site to be lost, that is going to be lost, then a developer might be expected to replace it. So some of the work we're doing is using those contributions to then replace a pitch or build another pitch or improve the quality of a pitch. So it's not suggesting using your local pots of Sill to do that. Sorry, what was your other question? Which trumps which? We've worked quite closely with Gary Dickinson in planning as part of this. And it's very much to support the delivery of the local plan. And it obviously recommends protecting those pitches, but where, you know, if there is anywhere that comes up that's going to be lost, then there's a number of pieces of guidance there that mean that the developer would have to provide either funding for an alternative or provide an alternative on new pitch to replace what was being lost. So I think it's a supporting document to the local plan. It doesn't trump it. It provides the planners evidence to refer to kind of data, because it's based on a needs assessment. They need that data to kind of look at this and say, this is a robust kind of needs assessment. We can then make recommendations based on this. Sport England are also a statutory consultancy for every planning application. If this is adopted, they then use this as well as something that feeds into the recommendations they make in terms of what happens on a particular planning application or site.
Thank you. Councillor Hooper, you indicated this.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Comments, really. First one regarding the huge growth and ever increasing growth of girls' and women's football. Huge growth. And as you say about the changing facilities, they do need separate changing facilities. The more modern ones have got that, but certainly in some cases, it's not there. So that, and it's not only organisational one, the teams, but it's just ad hoc play as well for the girls and women. And then secondly, it's just gone. It's gone. I'm sorry. I've got another one, but I'll come back if I can.
Just to respond to that, one of the reasons that there is that projected growth in demand is a lot of the national governing bodies now do have that priority around developing women and girls' football or cricket or whichever the sport is. So they're kind of developing those clubs so that becomes important as we kind of develop changing facilities. So I know at Parson Cross, for example, the changing at the moment set up there doesn't meet the current requirements in terms of sort of separate facilities. So that's why we're looking at refurbishing.
I think the other one is just the loss of any potential pitches or pitches that we've got. We need to keep them all, because once they've gone, they've gone for future generations. I think we need to look at that. Thank you.
Do you want to speak, councillor Lee?
Just a couple of things. First, corrections, I think. On page 53, you say Hansworth Rec, that's in the east, but it's not in the south-east now. It was, perhaps it was, it would have been in the east area while back. And also Mather Road, you refer to, you've consulted, I'm not sure if you've consulted with on Mather Road, and that's on page 56, sorry. You mentioned Darnall Football Academy, which is, and they own the Davies site, so I'm not sure why they're commenting on Mather Road.
I think it's because since the action plan was developed, that was, Alan would have been working on that. Things have moved as well. So one of the kind of key things for us, once the strategy is adopted, is, I mean, a part of the process, stage E of Sport England's process, is to review and update that action plan. So we've obviously got Thea Kerwick, who started in post now to replace Alan. And she's going to be working with the clubs and national governing bodies to kind of go and develop those relationships again, have those conversations and make sure everything we've got is up to date and whether it needs updating.
So I am aware that Alan was working with a team that was maybe going to be using Mather Road as their base. And I don't know where that work's gone now and who's taking over from the work that Alan and James were doing. So that's just a question on that one. There is a friends of Mather Road, and we are putting, is it £300,000 of funding into a play area? And I think that includes £100,000 out for sports provision on that particular site. So we don't want to be losing sight of that more. We can develop, sorry to be so local, Chair. But I guess, you know, obviously, it's very important for all the reasons we talked about the last plan. It's about health and wellbeing and getting people involved and maybe sustaining that involvement in any kind of physical sport. I think that's including for girls, you know, and there's lots and lots of barriers, as you know. And again, although the pitches can be there, we need to make those, ensure that they are accessible in the long term as well, so that people, all people across the city can enjoy those facilities that we have got. So those were the main questions, I think, I had. Oh, and you've not mentioned Coleridge Road, and we have got a playing field at Tinsley that's not on this list. I don't know why they're not on the list.
They are part of the local football facilities plan, so they should marry up the two things, really. I mean, it may be that Coleridge Road wasn't, I can't answer that, to be fair. I'd have to go back and have a look as to why it wasn't in there. But as we update it, we will be adding them in. We are at the moment looking at developing a Football Foundation application over a number of pitch sites, one of which is Coleridge Road and one of which is Mather Road, because obviously both have some allocated funding there already. So they are on the radar and make sure they're included.
And just don't forget the Tinsley site, please, because I think that is stuck in legal.
Is that okay for you, Mary? Thank you. Councillor Little.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm looking at section 4.4, climate implications. I'm pleased that you, it says there, consider opportunities for biodiversity where appropriate. I'm very pleased that's in there. And as we discover more and more about better seed mixes, for example, that will encourage insects, and appropriate mixes for football pitches, I think that would be good to sort of include there. The science is improving all the time and obviously, you know, it's evolving. I'm very concerned about artificial pitches. We've got so much plastic in our environment and compounds that don't break down. You know, they're highly toxic for many, sometimes hundreds of years. I think we need to look at that a bit further, please.
We are looking at it as part of a project, we're developing at Woodburn Road with Woodburn Road Pavilion and pitches with the Football Foundation, where they're trialling a number of different new methods for those infill surfaces because they are aware of the sustainability issues with those. So it's actually a pilot project to kind of test several different new materials to do that. So that's actually something that is hopefully starting on site in the next couple of months. And that will then kind of feed into the Football Foundation's kind of framework and requirements for design in the future. So they're looking at that, and that's part of the pilot project we're working with them on.
Could this committee be fed back, that development fed back, because it's very exciting? And also, you know, we need to keep monitoring this because it will get, it's lost very easily. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernard. I can't see any more requests. That always gets it happening, doesn't it? I'll take Sue and then.
Thank you. Just two questions, but I think one of you, you've more or less answered anyway. So my first question is, well, start with a comment. I, you know, support these recommendations. They seem sensible and good. Looking particularly at numbers three and four, will that give power to local clubs to say, you know, we need changing facilities, our site needs drainage work? Can this strategy be used to support them in getting that work done? I mean, I've got a football club in my ward where drainage is appalling and they have no changing facilities at all, let alone specific boy and girls or men and women changing facilities. It's mainly used by young people. So really just, will that help them be able to get that work done? And then I did want to raise the issue, which councillor Little's already raised, about my instinctive concern about covering large areas of ground with plastic and where the plastic ends up as it gets gradually worn away. So I would actively support that. I know she's doing some work on it, but I would actively support that coming back as a report, please.
Okay, yeah, that's great. We'll bring back a report on Woodburn Road. In terms of the support for clubs, yes, we're working on a number of things. The Football Foundation have a grass pitch maintenance fund, which is available for clubs if we work with them to develop a partnership agreement. So that's something we're doing with a number of clubs across the city. So I'm not sure which club you're referring to, but if you want them to get in touch.
It's at Redmires.
I think we're already talking to them, actually, and they are on the list of the projects I referred to, to Mary before, Coleridge Road, Mather Road. Redmires are also on there to look at facilities on that site and improving pitch maintenance. So I think my officer, Thea, is probably already in touch with them, but I will check with her and make sure she is.
It was just a more sort of general point. I mean, that's obviously an example.
I think there's two or three that are in the process of developing a partnership agreement so that they can then either apply for funding themselves or apply to the grass pitch maintenance fund and carry out some of that maintenance themselves. So yeah, that's kind of following on those recommendations. It supports us doing that as well and kind of encourages us to do it wider with more clubs where we can. So yeah, that's definitely something that we can do.
Thank you. And final question.
It's just a comment, really. Yeah, just a comment. I just want to pay tribute to James Barnes and Alan Williams, who have served the city really well over the time, that they worked for us, which is a long time. And it was with passion and commitment and hard work. And there is a legacy there that goes unsung. And I think we should make a note of that and put it in the minutes, please.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, two more. Councillor Elliot and then councillor Little.
Thank you. So on page 44, you refer to outdoor sports. So is this just focusing on team sports? Because I think it's important not to forget other sports, biking, skateboarding, and, you know, bowling's been mentioned, you know, put on parkour equipment, particularly because, you know, they're things that can be built into the natural environment rather than using plastic grass. And we need to be thinking about other, you know, leisure and health and wellbeing and recreational needs? Or is this just specifically about those five sports?
The playing pitch strategy is specifically about grass pitches and artificial grass pitches, and it is those key sports. Obviously, our wider sport, and this will sit under our sport and leisure strategy. And under that, you know, we will be looking across the board at all the sports. So it may be that in certain, for certain sports, we develop specific plans, like swimming, we'll have an aquatic strategy underneath. Or, you know, and also, I guess, there'll be kind of plans with, you know, priorities within Parks and Countryside as well. But the playing pitch strategy itself that I'm reporting on here is just the grass pitches and artificial grass pitches. So it's a very focused piece of work, but it follows Sport England's guidance.
Okay, thank you. And in recommendation G1, so how would it work in practice? So if there's lacked sites or disused sites and the council plan to develop on a site with a disused pitch, is the onus on the council then to gather the strategic evidence to demonstrate it's no longer needed if they wanted to build on it?
I think, yeah, I think so, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And finally, councillor Little.
Yes, finally. Just a bit of positive feedback, really, that I'd like to tell Parks Department. Please congratulate them on making the effort to go from using, marking out football pitches, they're using white, you know, they use a white line. They've now stopped using glyphosate within that mixture. You know, it may seem a small step, but actually to begin to get that cultural change of thinking about nature, I think, is to be commended. And I assume we could say to the staff, you know, thank you for making this, you know, it's noticed. This is the direction we want to go in. It does mean more work, though, because the white lines only last like three weeks if you've got continuous rain because the white line dissolves, whereas with the glyphosate, because there was an oil base to it, it was more permanent. So they have had to make adjustments. But yeah, congratulations to them, please.
Thank you very much. And can you make sure that, can you please turn your mic off? Thank you. Both of you, please. Marianne? Thank you. Yeah, good point, councillor Little. Please, can you pass on through your chains of command, our thanks, and it is noted. Thank you. On that basis, I'd like to go to, there's a recommendation which we need to have a vote on. The recommendation is to improve the adoption of the playing pitch strategy for Sheffield, set out in this report. Are we all agreed? In that case, that has been passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Item 10 is the budget monitoring for month four. I believe that this will be presented by Ryan Keyworth. Before you start, Ryan, could you just, for the benefit of anybody watching this on TV, could you just let them know who you are, please?
Thanks, Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ryan Keyworth, and I'm the council's Director of Finance and Commercial Services. Okay, so in front of the committee today is the council's month four budget monitoring position with an insert relevant directly to this committee's budget position. You'll note from the report that the council has an overspend or forecasting an overspend of £21.7 million. It's a relatively similar position to the previous month, and in fact, the position hasn't changed significantly over the course of this year. What we've now done is built in the best estimate we can make at this point in time of the pay award that might apply to offices for this financial year. So we've included an estimate of that. It is, we actually budgeted as a council for a 4% pay award, and the average pay award will be slightly higher than that. So there is an increasing cost as a result of that. In terms of this committee, a relatively positive position overall. Committee is almost balanced. Committee is almost balanced, which is a great result. So thank you to the officers and members who've been, been looking after this. There is a budget implementation plan shortfall relating to libraries, but that's, that's more than offset by savings elsewhere. Although I note that, you know, there may be a carry forward request in respect to the page hall project that will ultimately require finance subcommittee and strategy and resources committee approval as, as we go through the rest of this year. But nonetheless, nonetheless, a good, a good financial result. I'm not going to go into any detail unless the committee particularly wants to, but I would just draw your attention again, and I know it's been part of the budgeting conversations that, that are, have happened to the one-off funding of £1.3 million, which is in this year's budget, which the report specifically refers to in respect of community safety and locality teams. Chair, I'm obviously happy to take any questions and perhaps with the health of some of the officers who are a bit closer to the detail than I might be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Councillor Little.
Yeah, I'm sort of a bit bemused really, because we looked earlier on at the, the work programme for this, this, this committee. I'm not sure what we're budgeting for, you know, because things seem to get, you know, moved away from this, this committee, our responsibilities. So who takes responsibilities for those sort of footloose bits of policy?
Okay, so the, the budget covers also the revenue funding. So for instance, employee costs, transport costs, machinery costs. So it's kind of, the, the budget covers not just the additional work, for instance, capital grants or improvement works or section one or six works. This is largely a revenue budget and it covers the day-to-day operational activities of the services. So in my area, the parks and countryside, bereavement services, sport and health team, libraries, and it's the day-to-day revenue costs of running those services that Ryan is referring to.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ryan. In that case, the recommendation is that we note the council's challenging financial position as at the end of July 2022, which is month four. Are we all agree? Then that's been passed unanimously. Thank you. We come to the final item on the agenda, which is actually in two parts. This is item 11. The first part, I'm quite happy to take an open session. The second part is the one I referred to earlier, which will be under a closed session. There is actually, you can't tell this, but the gallery is now empty, but of course, the web, the web system is still on. So the first part, are you taking this, Lisa? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so as, as Ryan has outlined, we've got a challenging financial position, but this is talking about the, this committee's budget for 2023-24. Okay, so for next year's budget for this committee, which also covers communities, parks and leisure. So through a combination, I'll just summarise the paper. So through a combination of the pay award. You okay? They haven't. Is that okay? Yeah. Is that okay? Has everyone got papers? Okay. So, yeah, so through a combination of pay award, officer pay award, energy costs and energy inflation, transport costs, fuel costs, the Communities, Parks and Leisure Committee in 2324 will have a budget deficit of £2.323 million. Okay? And that is split of £1.721 million for parks, leisure and libraries, which is the areas that I look after, and then also 300, sorry, 602,000 in the communities portfolio, which is the area that my colleague Dawn looks after, and Lorraine is here today, Dawn's not able to be here. So on page five of this report, at under 2.3, there is a table which breaks down each element of that pressure for both parks, leisure and libraries and communities. Is everybody able to see that table? Yeah, okay. So not going through it line by line, but you can see the total pay award and the impact that that has is £1.242 million on this committee. There's a pay award of DSG, which is 25k, which I'm going to look at Ryan and Lorraine in case there are any questions on that. Energy costs are going to impact the committee by 598, so just short of 600,000. Team around the person has a funding gap of 220. There's a loss of funding in communities of 41,000. Transport and fleet costs, which are largely in parks and countryside, will increase by around 105,000. There's an applications post that is no longer funded, 57,000, and road fuel costs are anticipated to increase by about 35,000. So that gives you the totals of 1.721 and 602 for the respective portfolio areas, given the total of 2.323 for this committee to find for next year. Okay.
Does anybody have any questions on that element? Yes.
It's just about, we always have this problem, don't we, about grass cutting and that we have housing cutting some grass and then parks, and they might be next door to each other, but then we have different teams doing it. Is there anything being looked at about bringing that together? I know it's, I've asked before a long time ago, but I know it's a massive task, but it's streetshead as well, and there must be some savings there while people are out doing everything.
Sorry, is that okay for me to come back? So housing don't cut the grass, parks and countryside cut all of the grass, but, but part of the work that's done on, for instance, the housing estate, she's recharged the housing revenue account, the HRA. So it's one team that does the grass cutting, apart from the highways, which is the streets ahead work that you've alluded to. And we are continuing through colleagues with street scene and regulation to look at how we can work with, within the AMI contract and within parks and countryside to see if we can make any savings there.
Are there any other questions? If not, we'll move to the closed session. Certainly.
Can you say what the costs are of changing from the traditional methods of killing weeds and marking out football pitches to what we're using now? Because I don't know, I know they must, it might be less, might be more.
I don't know, off the top of my head. When they, I don't know if Ruth knows or not, but when, we can certainly get the answer for that because there is an answer to that question. It depends on which method replaces it. So some of the methods that replace it that don't include glyphosate are more expensive. Some of the options where we're not using any kind of weed killer at all, and we're suggesting we do that manually, of course, that increases the number of people that are needed to do that work. So I don't have the answer with me, but we do have a report that gives us some estimates around what the other methods, both the effectiveness and the cost of them. I think the, the bottom line was that for anything that we do adopt, there would be, other than just not doing anything, there would be a cost increase. But then also there would possibly be a cost increase of doing nothing at all because of the health and safety aspects and weeds going through walls and things like that. So there is a report that details that, Mary, I just don't have it to hand.
Councillor Little.
Yes, I'm wondering about the changing grass cutting regimes, the various options being looked at and priced.
Yes, that is in the second part of the report that I'd like to come on to, if that's okay.
Okay, thank you. As I say, if there's no further questions, we will go to, move to the closed session. It's a recommendation, and it's quite important that my understanding is that this is, we are not within this recommendation recommending these figures as they are today, that we are recommending the process that we have to go through between now and November, which gives groups time to reflect on these, ask more questions. So I'm hoping that we'll all be able to support the recommendation. I'll read it out. This committee acknowledges the recommendation approved that the Strategy and Resources Committee on the 5th of July 2022, the policy committees will be asked to develop savings, additional income options that cover their own pressures, in effect, cash standstill, and to require policy committees to report to their meetings in September on how they can balance their budgets. Well, we're almost there. Point two, notes as this committee's initial response to the Strategy and Resources Committee's request, a set of budget proposals set out in this report and any appendices. Number three, notes that officers will now work with members to consult with relevant stakeholders, including with partners, trade unions, and in respect of equalities and climate change on the proposals in this report, so as to inform the final budget proposals. Point four, notes that officers will work to develop any necessary detailed implementation plans and proposals in this report, so that proposals, if ultimately approved, can be implemented as planned before and during the 2023-24 financial year. And finally, asked to receive a further report in November that will set out the final budget for this committee, following consultation and any adjustments requested by the Strategy and Resources Committee. Can we all agree on that? Thank you. That is unanimously passed recommendation. Thank you very much. That concludes our meeting. It's been a long one. We've covered a lot of, thank you very much for your time and attention. And I'm more than happy, and the officers will probably now shout at me, if you feel in the light of dawn that you need some more discussion, I can set up an informal committee briefing session. And I was just waiting in terms of, because this is a closed report, do you know if we could share this with members, other members of the council?
Chair, I'll take that question to the monitoring officer and come back to you directly, if that's okay with you. Thank you.
Chair, we've agreed that the contents of the confidential appendices can be shared with other council members of the council, elected members of the council, for the purposes of the consultation exercise that's described in this, in this report. It's obviously on the understanding that those appendices remain confidential to those who receive them, so other elected members of the council. But of course, it's impossible to consult with other elected members as part of your various political groups without them having sight of the details. So we've agreed that that's possible.
Has everybody got that? You can share that within your groups, but please, when you're sharing, stress that it can't go outside those groups. It still remains a confidential document. On that basis, thank you very much for today.